Good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, April 3rd, 2017. I often invite you to call in with comments or questions. Please don't do that tonight. It's a special evening by state law, the annual organizational meeting, which ends with a series of dry-as-dust resolutions, but it begins with a number of very happy events. Tonight, we swear in trustee Steve Lord for his second three-year term, and following that, Nicole Asquith, who has won her first three-year term. Thereafter, we'll have some comments about the larger-than-life figure who departs the board, nine-year trustee Mindy Barard. So without further ado, I invite Justice John Curley to swear in trustee Lord, after which Steve can make a few comments, and then we will repeat the process for Nicole.
You will be short.
Raise your right hands. I, Stephen Lord.
I, Stephen Lord.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the municipal code of the Village of Pleasantville.
And the municipal code of the Village of Pleasantville.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a trustee for the Village of Pleasantville.
As a trustee for the Village of Pleasantville.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody. I will not make this long. I've listened to enough of these as well. I will just want to say, I wanted to thank everyone on the village board, including our departing larger-than-life figure mentioned just previously, for the encouragement to run again. Also Patty Dwyer and other members of the village administration that encouraged me to run again. There has been probably few more educational experiences for me than getting involved in local government, and I will say that it has created a better understanding and sort of reaffirmed my personal faith in the way the system works. And the fact that when we're all unified together in running a little town, or trying to make the world, in our little section of it, as good as we can make it, that we can actually all be unified in that purpose and get along very well. So, thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to serving again another term with these trustees. Thank you.
Raise your right hand, sir. I, Paul Asquith.
I, Paul Asquith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the municipal code of the Village of Pleasantville.
And the municipal code of the Village of Pleasantville.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a trustee for the Village of Pleasantville.
As a trustee for the Village of Pleasantville.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I'll make this brief as well. My two children are in the audience, so they're the next generation of those who have married, along with my husband, so I wanted to thank them for coming. I want to thank everybody who has supported me as a newbie in this process. I have a lot more learning to do, but everyone has been extremely receptive and willing to share their information and experience with me, and I'm very grateful for that. I look for, excuse me, I want to say that it's an honor to follow in the footsteps of the many who have served on the Board of Trustees before me, and that I look forward to working with my fellow trustees and with our mayor in the service of our community. I'm excited, looking forward to the future of our village. It seems like a time where there's a certain sort of effervescence in the air, where there are lots of ideas and hopes for the future of our village, and I look forward to working with my fellow residents and my fellow trustees to make Pleasantville the best that it can be. Thank you.
So, as reported, tonight is the night that Mindy Barard departs the board after a nine-year stint. And if one goes back and looks through the village archives, it's easy to see that a nine-year stint, though not unprecedented, puts you in fairly rarefied company. Not everybody takes on this mission and hangs on with the kind of commitment it takes, allowing yourself to stay in the crossfire for nine years, and that is to be honored generally, and certainly to be honored, very specifically for Mindy. We have a little social event planned afterwards, and there will be plenty more to say, including some items that perhaps are best left for that setting instead of the solemn proceedings we undertake now. But I point out a couple of things, and one of them is, as is evidenced by the audience, former mayor John Nona and former county legislator John Nona, for whom Mindy worked, Jonathan Cunningham and Brian Skarstad, two longstanding trustees in the trenches for a long time with Mindy, and in Brian's case, in the trenches with Mindy and the village party for a long time thereafter, before that. Some crazy and quite wonderful stories that all of us will remember forever. And all of that has happened in the context of a board where all kinds of agreement and disagreement has happened, but this board has somehow been able to maintain what we all hope might be actually a civic model, where folks can agree and disagree in various ways. I have more to say, and I will do so in a moment, but I know there are a couple of other people have something to say. Superintendent of Schools Mary Fogsalter is here tonight on Mindy's behalf, and I invite you to offer a few comments.
All right, so it is with great pride and joy that I'm here tonight to thank Mindy for all of her years of service. I've known Mindy wearing many different hats. I've known her as a parent, because I've had the pleasure of teaching her two children, Marguerite and Garrett. I've known her as a staff member, for those of you who might remember or might not remember. Mindy worked for a while at the Bedford Road School, and I've known her as a great partner parent in the community of the school. So, in that theme, Mindy, and I've watched you transition to the village board, where you continued that work of service. For those of you who are at home watching or are here in the audience, the role of a village trustee, or I'd even say for a school board member, is a gift to this community. And it's something that all of us take very seriously. You give selfishly, selflessly, I'm sorry, to this community. You give up hours with your family, and you are, as the mayor just correctly identified, you become that figure that everyone brings your problems and their problems to, expecting solutions. But this wonderful town is very privileged to have people who give of themselves to this community and elect themselves to serve here. So we thank you for that. So I would put my, I'm here tonight to give you a certificate of appreciation from our school board and school administration for your years of service here on the village board, and I will put my comments around four Ps. So, for those of you that know Mindy, you know that she attacks everything with great pride and passion, and she has pride and passion for her role here, her position on this board as a village trustee. She has pride and passion as a panther, even after her children graduated from the Pleasantville School District. Mindy would show up with her lovely husband Jim at Ragamuffin parades and the Tina Gambino race walk, and stand at Parkway Field in the cold, watching a football game. She's also a proud and passionate parent to her two children, Garrett and Marguerite, who I taught, and she's also a proud and passionate partner to her wonderful husband, Jim. So, Mindy, congratulations. We thank you so much for nine years of service and for decades of service to this community. Thank you. On behalf of the Pleasantville School District, we present this certificate of appreciation to Mindy Barard, village trustee. Thank you for your service and commitment to the students and staff of the district. Thank you.
Mindy hasn't changed a bit in all the years I've known her.
Yeah, I wish. I could say the same thing about you. Go back down.
You're going back down. It's taken nine-plus years to make Mindy even slightly speechless, so I'm savoring this moment. A nine-year trustee, Jonathan Cunningham, who left the board last year, asked to offer a few comments.
I'm going to save the good remarks for the paying customers. Twelve years, by the way. How quickly he forgets. But six of them I got to spend on the board with Mindy. I noticed there was a gigantic moving truck down in front, taking up four parking spots, which I assumed was Mindy's because she's moving her files out. She was, I really appreciated being a board member with Mindy, usually. She brought that, as Mary so eloquently stated, and thank you, Mary, for going before me, and now I have that to live up to, but she brought that passion to everything that she did, every decision. She was a voracious reader of The Packet, which was both good and bad, because if you hadn't read it, she was going to make sure you knew it. And so that made the engagement all the more challenging and really kept us on our toes, and at the end of the day, really resulted in us, I think, making better decisions. She was incredibly opinionated, and most of those are reasoned. Jim, right?
Yes, Jim.
Not all of them. Not all of them. But, and we disagreed many times, but it never really ever left this room once we got outside. She had a very good manner about her, such that disputes were left here, they were settled here, and then at times we disagreed to disagree. And that is a sign of, that's a mark of a mature and good board member, and a standard by which I think, was a standard which held our board high, and again, which I think led to good decision-making. So it is, with sadness, I see you leaving. I greatly appreciated the experience that you brought to this board and the different perspectives that you bring to this board. With that, I say, congratulations, Nicole. Congratulations, Steve. You will bring your own style, you already have.
I'm going to keep.
You know, it needs a little tweaking.
You'll let me know.
But no, and you have big shoes to, there's a big shadow, but you will quickly, I'm sure, figure your own path and find your way around that, and I wish you both good luck with that. And thank you very much for serving. Thank you, guys, too, not to forget you. Thanks for the board for giving me a few minutes. And thank you, Mayor, for yours. Mindy, congrats. Good luck. Have fun.
So I know some others have comments that they intend to make in our next venue, but if there's any other speaker dying to arrive. So, OMG. Mindy and I go back a long way, and our lives are intertwined in various ways, including the fact that we each have an older daughter and a younger son, and exactly the same age, who march their way through 13 years of the Pleasantville Schools in parallel. And when we got involved, Mindy got involved before me in the world of politics, and I followed. As I mentioned earlier, there are a whole lot of stories, and it's worth noting that when you spend as much time together as one does in this setting, there's a mixing of one's personal life as well as one's business life, and there are sort of six leitmotifs that occupied a whole lot of our time with Mindy. The first is her children, the second is her dogs, in sequence there, the third is her teeth, the fourth is her joints, the fifth is the pool, and the sixth is the Miami Dolphins. So you take those six subjects, and it sucks up a lot of time, but some of those subjects wound together with my own life. Although, Mindy, we have for you the dry-as-dust plaque, which we hope you will hang in a place of prominence, perhaps we're moving up an artwork and putting this up in place, I have a few other items that I dug out of my little archive that reflect a little piece of our shared history. This is Boozer as a puppy. He was in my lap on your couch. That is, I hesitate even to say when that was, but I have kept, held this picture for quite a long time, and I feel it's time to give it to you. Apologies to Marguerite, because I don't think I got you at this same occasion, but here is Garrick with his friend Eamon at the send-off for the prom, just another of those moments when Mindy and I shared our lives together. But many of us who go back this long will remember what was perhaps the fundamental course of change in the world of media in Pleasantville, New York, and fundamentally changed transparency in government, when perhaps world's oddest trio, Mindy Barard, Brian Skarstad, and Dennis DeCosta hatched a television program called Pleasantville Live. So I don't know if you can zoom in on that, Shane, but here are our four stills that date back quite a few years, quite a few years, and there were epic moments in Pleasantville Live. One interesting piece of it is that every show for the entire show had the banner "Breaking And, you know, there were classic moments. There was the moment when a live sheep was brought into the PC TV studios, under circumstances perhaps best not described. There was the moment when, in a snow emergency, there was a live, I recall it being marathon broadcast about the blizzard. I think John Nona was interviewed on Pleasantville Live, breaking news, reporting what you had seen from the cab of a snowplow. Brian reports that people were calling in from other communities, thanking them for at least giving them something to watch when there was nothing else to do. And then, of course, there was the classic, much-loved as well as modestly reviled episode, Le Vierge de Lumière, when the three of these characters, was it Sam Skarstad as cameraman, Sam is leaning out the back window with a camera in the darkness of a December night as they careen around Pleasantville, reviewing people's holiday lights. And this generated some problems, including some village board problems, when Brian made a couple of ill-advised comments, and we received a letter of complaint from the Masons, just an indication, just an indication of what Pleasantville Live meant to the community. So, I don't, as you look, I think Mary's quite right. You can look at these pictures and can hardly find a day that Mindy has aged since these moments, but little did we know at that moment that this was the beginning of a career as a Pleasantville trustee, and then edging into county government, working for John Nona, and now working in North Castle for supervisor Mike Chalero, who visited with his family last meeting for Mindy's final night. So, a great run. Mindy and Jonathan and I, I think, are the ones that share in this room some extraordinarily difficult moments that are the kind of moments that you don't anticipate when you sign up for village service, and yet we all prevailed, and we look back on all that we did at the time as serving as some kind of an anchor in stormy waters, and certainly, Mindy is nothing if not that. She's often wrong, I can tell you, and she's never had a thought that wasn't right, but amid that, just as Jonathan reported, blood is thicker than water, and that woman is the poster child for loyalty and commitment. So, Mindy, come on up. Let's hear what you have to say, and we'll have plenty more to say in a little while. Off-camera, I'm sorry to report.
So I do have to say, one of the brighter moments of our Pleasantville Live show was when we, Shop Right was going to go into where Henckels is right now.
Stop and Shop.
Stop and Shop. It was Stop and Shop.
Still have to correct.
And it was a big community, it was, it was right, it was a big community issue, and a lot of people were upset about it, and one of the breaking news banners, fortunately we had Brian Skarstad writing those banners, was "All we are saying is give peas a chance." Brian, that was one of your best moments, I think. But I am so honored to have served this village for really over 20 years, and nine of them on this great board. I first want to just recognize my family, who just has put up with me for so many years. My son Garrick isn't here tonight, he's here in spirit. They've always supported me and encouraged me over the years, and as trustee, you do, you sacrifice a lot from your family, time, and sometimes you're a little, you know, stressed out about something, and they're like, "Just put the phone down, for God's sake." So they always respected my commitment, and I think Jim is realizing that, "Oh, my God, I have to watch another football game on the weekend during football season, so I'm sorry, honey, it is Monday night football. You thought you had off, but now not anymore." But I love you so much, and I thank you for being here tonight. So, local government is really the heart of a community, and one that functions the way it does, because it's not political, and it focuses on the things that are most important to a community, making sure we supply essential services, traffic and safety issues, making sure that we have our, you know, land use issues, and most importantly, maintaining the quality of life, period. That's what we're here for. The village has what I like to call a mean-lean working machine, and it's led by our incredible village administrator Patty Dwyer, whose professionalism and dedication to this village has been exemplary. Patty, thank you so much. It's been such an honor to work with you. She leads a group of people that often go above and beyond their service for the Village of Pleasantville. Our department heads and their staff, it has been such a complete pleasure to work alongside you, learn from you, and we, together, we move this village forward. Thank you for always answering my endless questions and making it so easy, really, to do the job of the village trustee. The village operates the way it does because of the time and efforts of our volunteer boards and committees. They are tireless, dedicated, and have a spirit that embodies everything and that is Pleasantville stands for. To them, I am so proud of what you have achieved, and your efforts have resulted in the quality of life Pleasantvillians have come to expect. My husband and I moved here in 1990 with our little baby girl that's sitting over there. A year later, we had our, we welcomed our son, and we instantly started to weave the fabric we hold so dear with each person that we met, either in the park, swinging our child on a swing, at the soccer field, in the pool, and through the years, our fabric increased in size with each thread that was given to us. We made lifelong friends and neighbors, and we talked about how we can make things better, what we can do to contribute to Pleasantville. At that time, the downtown in Pleasantville was in pretty bad shape. Then Mayor John Nona put together a Business Revitalization Task Force. I met what I like to call the elders of our community, Peter Eschweiler, Peter Russell, Tony Emerson, John Guyon. They were such a source of inspiration to me, and they were more thread to weave our fabric. Out of the Business Revitalization Task Force came many things. One was the farmers' market. With the help of Mayor Nona, Lori Hirschman, Tony Emerson, Jane Wan, Charlie Cook, who was then the village administrator, and Brian Skarstad, we embarked on the journey of getting people to come to the downtown. That's really all we wanted to do, just get people down there. We had corn roasts, we had pumpkin decorating, we had stuff the scarecrow. We even had some grape stomping, that Mayor Nona had come down there and stomped some grapes for Prospero. We were just, "Please, come to the downtown," and they were just more threads for our fabric. And now, thanks to Peter Rogavin and his committee, he put together, you know, one of the best farmers' markets, actually, the best farmers' market in Westchester County. This guy came to every single one of the farmers' markets when we had more farmers than people, and we were trying to figure out how to get people there, and Peter would, Peter Rogavin would stand behind me, and he would ask me a zillion questions, a zillion questions. He was, got to the point where he was just so annoying, and then, you know, look what he did. He just took off with it. It just warms my heart. But again, he contributed to our pieces of our fabric, our school community, and my colleagues on the school board. I know how tough your job is, and I am grateful that you've stepped up and to provide leadership and guidance to our community. I have enjoyed the exchange of ideas and the sometimes robust debate we've had, but in the end, we all worked toward the same goal, and I thank you so much for all your service. It's just, it's been an honor to work with you. Our residents have no bounds. Over the years, we've always looked to make things better. What can we do? We joined more committees, we coached more teams, we volunteered at the schools. So we formed our own political party. That was really a lot of fun. We had people like Dan and Kim Turner, John Diefenbach, Mark Reynolds, the Bramswigs, I can't name them all, that all contributed to the threads to the fabric that is Pleasantville. Nothing shows the spirit of Pleasantville more than when there is a need, a loss, and sometimes a profound loss, and we've had way too many of them in Pleasantville. But it is at that precise time that Pleasantville rises, and rises to the height that is so unimaginable. We take that fabric and we wrap it around those in need, around those who share their profound loss, and we hold them in the warmth of our community. During these dark times, no matter where the service is, whether it's a shiva, whether it's a wake, whether it's a funeral, you look around the room, they're all Pleasantville people, wall-to-wall Pleasantville people. So I close by saying to this great board, and you are a great board, thank you for your service, and thank you to those I have served with in the past, Jonathan, always an honor to work with you, Michael Gilfeather, who can't be here tonight, he's in Arizona, Brian, you're the best, Bernie Gordon, Steve Lopez, collect your threads from as many people as you can and weave your fabric to embrace this great community. I love you, all of you. Good luck. You're doing great, and just keep up the good work. Thank you so much.
From the bottom of all of our hearts, not only for all you've done, but for those great words. I think maybe this feel-good night, we should institute a round of hugs at every meeting. What do you think? All right, on to the more mundane moments to get through them, and then head on out and have a few more.
Can we just get an opportunity to say?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, absolutely, please. Yes.
No, I just wanted to, on camera, to acknowledge Mindy and all the work she does here. Mindy and I didn't know each other that well. She's much older than I, you know.
Really, probably older than all of us, I think, I don't know.
Just kidding. But the day, I think it was the day after I won the election, she called me and sort of, you know, laid the groundwork and talked about the pool, which Mary needed to be the fifth P.
Yeah.
When you were talking, all I was thinking is the pool. But I'm so sorry to see you go. You bring incredible institutional knowledge of what we do here, and I think that's going to be missed, and I know that you still have the passion and the energy, and I hope someday that you'll be back. I do, because we'll miss you, and I appreciate all that you did. We didn't always get along, but at the end of the day, we made it work, so I just want to say thank you.
You know, I met Mindy when I ran the first time. I'm in my second term, but I had about a six-year hiatus between my first term and my current term, and at that time, Mindy, with Brian and John Diefenbach and Dan and Kim Turner and so on, they ran me, and I just knew Mindy as, you know, that woman in the group. And I just knew Mindy as, you know, that woman in the group who's helping and she's going out and she's knocking on doors and she's gathering up signatures and she's got signs and so on. And the night of the election, my greatest memory of that, the night of the election, after it was all over, let's get in the van, we're riding around, we're going to pick up all the signs. And she made me jump out, I don't know whose van I was in, I wasn't, we opened the door and we were picking up all the signs because you can't leave the signs around the village, you know? And just that sort of energy, I had no idea then what her contribution had been already to the village. And then to see after we met and I've seen what you've done, it's just incredible, you know, cornerstone, a real cornerstone to the village. As a lot of other people are, but with people like that, it's what keeps the village going and always improving and you're just a huge, huge part of it, not to be forgotten. Thank you.
I'll echo everything that Colleen and Joe said and Peter as well, or Mayor Chair. I am here largely because of your encouragement back then to run. You encouraged me to do it. And you said something which has stuck to me all this time, actually, and that's you can't be, you know, if you want to help change things, you have to be part of the solution, not just stand there and complain about what you don't like. You have to get involved. And I took that to heart. And so I wanted to thank you personally. I'm up here because of you and other folks as well. But you were very, very, very strident at the time. I know that comes as a great shock to everyone. And I also want to echo Joe's comment about, you know, the breadth of knowledge and Colleen, I think you said institutional knowledge. It really has been helpful for me. I'm coming off my first term and I learned a tremendous amount from you. So thank you. Because I sat here and every once in a while, I'd go, "What does that mean?" She would very quietly give me a very quick tutorial on what was going on. So again, thank you and we're going to miss you.
I'm counting on Steve to pass me the notes when I don't know what I'm doing. Mindy, I just wanted to say thank you for your willingness to offer your, all your wealth of knowledge and your advice and I'm sure that we will be in touch. Mindy and I bumped into each other at the nail salon over the weekend when my mom and I, who was visiting, went to get a pedicure and we were talking about village business. I have the feeling that you will continue to be part of our effort here and I look forward to similar conversations.
You think?
Jonathan never left. I think we're going to have two of them coming to all of them.
All right, thank you for all of that. And again, congratulations to Steve and to Nicole. Delighted to begin this new year with Steve in a second term and Nicole in a first. All right, we have a few resolutions that are mayoral official appointments and then through the route of the annual resolutions. Number 47, resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following persons to positions listed below for the terms in accordance with the village law. Treasurer Mary Schwartz through April 2019, Deputy Village Clerk Patricia Dwyer through April 2018, Deputy Village Treasurer Noreen Regan through April 2018, Associate Justice Virginia Collins through April 2018, Prosecutor George Pappas through April 2018, and Assessor Lloyd Tash through April 2018. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Number 48 is our resolution for appointments of liaisons and we are still considering how to structure that. And so we're going to move that and then I'll move to table it. Resolution number 48, mayoral trustees to boards and commissions, committees, and village departments. Is there a second?
Second.
As just described, we have some further work to think about that. Is there a motion to table that?
So moved.
Number 48, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, duly tabled. Resolution 49, resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the mayor's appointments of the following persons to various boards, commissions, and committees. The zoning board, a five-year term to expire 2022. Steve Kraus. Architectural review board, a three-year term to expire 2020. Elizabeth Ward and Tracy Tegmeyer. Ethics board, a one-year term to expire 2018. John Nona, thank you, John. Bernard Gordon, a board we hope to have very little activity. Parks and Rec Advisory Board, a three-year term to expire 2020. Joe Ruhl, Dan McPhee, and Petro Zorgman. Conservation Advisory Council, two-year term to expire 2019. Libby Brennicholz, Doug McDonald, Jennifer Fraley, Anna Loazzo, and Edward Goralsky. Village curator, one-year term to expire 2017. Carsten Johnson. Beautification Committee, one-year terms to expire 2017. Kathy Dinkle Chair, Marion Coglin, Franz Corbella, Elizabeth Ward, Tanya Cunningham, Marlene Kenapi, Marilyn Ross, Pat January, and Virginia Pankati. Recycling Committee, one-year terms to expire 2017. Danielle Barry Gass and Edwin Kuo, joint co-chairs. Sharon Avrutik, Perdi Buie, Linda Schenkman-Curtis, Andrea DeGeorge, Pat January, Edwin Kuo, already mentioned, Helen Muir, Virginia Pankati, Kim Turner, and Dan Turner. Is there a second for those appointments?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Here is your moment, Nicole, number 50, your first resolution.
Okay. Resolve that the Board of Trustees shall hold their regular meeting at 8:00 PM. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to read the title of the resolution. Schedule of regular and work sessions meeting.
You're right, you can start.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all in good style.
See you.
All right. Resolve that the Board of Trustees shall hold their regular meeting at 8:00 PM on the second and fourth Monday of each month, except April, when the organizational meeting shall be the first Monday and shall convene at 7:00 PM. Work sessions shall commence at 7:00 PM on the second and fourth Monday of each month from May through December, then every Monday at 7:00 PM during the months of January, February, March, and April. When any such meeting date falls on a legal holiday, the meeting shall be held on the next succeeding day unless amended by the Board of Trustees. All meetings of the Board of Trustees will take place at Village Hall, 80 Wheeler Avenue, second floor, unless otherwise noticed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Steve, number 51.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby sets the following procedure for calling a special meeting by the Board of Trustees. A special meeting can be called by either the mayor or at least two trustees acting together. The Board of Trustees will be contacted by telephone, text, fax, or email. In the event a special meeting is to be called, all attempts will be made to contact the news media and public as soon as practical after calling for the special meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Colleen, 52.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby designates the Journal News and Examiner as the official newspapers for the village of Pleasantville.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Joe, 53.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following authorized signatories for the financial transactions at all depositories. Peter Sheer, Mayor, Mary Schwartz, Treasurer, and Noreen Regan, Deputy Treasurer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Nicole, 54.
Okay. Resolve that the Bank of New York, JP Morgan Chase Bank, TD Bank, Sterling National Bank, Webster Bank, and Tompkins Maupack Bank B and the same are hereby designated as depositories for all funds of the village of Pleasantville. And it is hereby directed that all funds of the village of Pleasantville shall be deposited in said banks unless otherwise specifically authorized. And further resolved as stated in the record.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Steve.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to approve in-state conferences in accordance with the general municipal law, section 77-B. And further resolve that all out-of-state conferences shall be approved by resolution of the Board of Trustees.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Colleen, 56.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby sets the standard business mileage rate for transportation expenses for village employees using their personal vehicle for village business as per the rate guideline set forth by the Internal Revenue Service.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Joe, 57.
Pardon me, I'm just trying to get my, what's on my screen up properly. Whereas the Board of Trustees has determined to authorize payment in advance of auditive claims of public utility services, postage, credit, card, merchant fees, freight, and express charges, and whereas all such claims shall be presented at the next regular meeting for audit, and whereas the claimant and officer incurring or approving the same shall be jointly and severally liable for any amount disallowed by the Board of Trustees, now therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Trustees authorizes payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, credit card, merchant fees, freights, and express charges, and all other such claims shall be presented at the next regular meeting for audit by the Board of Trustees.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 58, Nicole.
Resolve that the village treasurer is hereby authorized to implement the village of Pleasantville's investment policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
That investment policy is included in the record and also available on our website. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Steve.
Down, pass the investment policy, 59?
59, yes.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby adopts the village of Pleasantville's purchasing policy, which, as with the investment policy, is attached to the record and will be included in our records.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 60, Colleen.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby adopts the village of Pleasantville's fiscal policy, which is also in the record.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 61, Joe.
Give me a moment to get to it. That fiscal policy was long. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby adopts the village of Pleasantville's credit card policy also attached in the record and available. I'm sorry. Policy, credit card policy, in the record and available for examination at Village Hall.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 62, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby adopts the village of Pleasantville's social media policy, which is also attached and available in the record.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a new element of our annual resolutions and one, I think, a worthy addition to guide our employees about their rights and responsibilities as regards social media. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 63, Steve.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby adopts the village of Pleasantville's equal employment opportunity policies and procedures, as with the others attached here in the record.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 64, Colleen.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby establishes employee eligibility for health insurance as required by the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act as follows. Standard measurement period will run from December 1st until the next year's November 30th. This is an annual timeframe and will occur every year. Standard administrative period will run from the end of the standard.
This is odd that the words are not there.
Measurement period of November through December 31st, I think. This is an annual timeframe and will occur every year. Standard stability period for a 12-month period from January 1st until January, excuse me, December 31st. Thank you. This is an annual timeframe and will occur every year.
Is there a second?
Second.
So just to confirm that the standard measurement period is 12 months, the administrative period is one month.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 65, Joe.
Whereas the New York retirement system requires that elected and appointed officials who are members of the New York State Retirement System report their time, and whereas the New York State Retirement System requires that we set a standard workday for elected and appointed officials, and whereas the New York State Retirement System requires that these hours be reported based on a timekeeping system, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the village of Pleasantville hereby establishes the following standard workday for the following employees and will report these days' work to the New York State and local employee retirement system based on the timekeeping system or record of activities maintained and submitted to the village clerk by the following employees. It's all in the record. It's the mayor, myself, Virginia Collins as Associate Justice, George Pappas as the prosecutor, Judy Weintraub as village clerk, Mary Schwartz as treasurer, and Noreen Regan as the deputy treasurer with beginning and ending terms and the standard workdays for each.
Typo there in Pappas. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. That is the last of our resolutions. Do we have any comment from the public on this or any other subject that would make sense on organization night?